This conference will now be recorded.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Thank you. To start our year off, we have past receivers from Lenox Baptist who is a resident of Edwardsville, and who is just going to start us off in a word of prayer for our year.
Would you guys pray with me this evening? Lord, we come before you tonight as we kick off a new year. We're excited to see what you have in store and how you're gonna move and work in the city of Edwardsville. And Lord, as we begin, your word commands us to pray for our leaders. And so I just want to do that. I pray for each leader that represents the city and the various people of this community. Lord, as they make plans in direction and lead us this upcoming year, Lord, I pray that you lead them. Lord, your word tells us in Proverbs, chapter 16, verse nine, that the mind of a man plans his ways, but the Lord determines his steps. So, Lord, I ask that you go before them, that you'd watch out over them, and that you'd help them with each step in this upcoming year. God, we love you and we're thankful for you. Pray this all through your Son. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. And next we'll have our swearing-in ceremony. And I'll let Chantel take the lead on that. You can go first.
May I state my name? Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Kansas and faithfully discharge the duties of Councilmember of Edwardsville, Kansas, so help me God.
Who actually want to pass their pictures before me?
Oh, did you want to do this first?
Yeah. Do you want to?
Where are you taking them?
Oh, yeah, I took a couple. The onions? Come on up, guys. All right. Starts the crowd, huh? One, two, three, ready? There we go. Got three good ones, I'll send them to you.
Mr. Reynolds? I'll state my.
I hear a lot.
Solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Kansas and faithfully discharge the duties of Councilmember of Edwardsville, Kansas, so help me God.
I will.
There you go. Say it again, please.
Swearing in, yeah? It still works.
Here, this is good.
Fifty years ago, dude.
May I state your name?
My name.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Kansas and faithfully discharge the duties of Councilmember of Edwardsville, Kansas, so help me God.
There's a lot of streaming lights right above you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Pretty painless, huh?
Moving on to item number one on the agenda, it is the consent agenda items. We have A, B, and C approval of the minutes for the meeting from December 11, and then the special meeting December 13, and then a statement of the bill of state.
Madam Mayor, make a motion to accept the consent agenda items listed below. A second?
We have a motion from Councilman Schreiber, a second from Councilman Adcox. Will the first please follow? Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Adcox?
Yes.
Mullen?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Moving on to item two, request or comments from the public. There being none, we'll move on to item number three, and we're gonna hear a staff presentation regarding the 2023 budget performance.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Council, our city attorney is running late, I heard from him just a little bit, coming from Tavika. He does have some things to print out, so we may want to consider a block in the four and five, just if that happens. As soon as he gets here, we'll print out the material and be ready. So, I'll try not to be too long with it. This is not doom or gloom, folks, that's not what I'm presenting here. What I've talked to you about in the past was how one year's budget may impact the other. That's why I like looking at at least two years of budgets. So, for example, this summer we'll be doing a 2025 budget. We'll also be taking a look at 2026 budget. I strongly recommend that because if you may want to do something here, then the next thing you know, well, you have these things to pay for in 2026, and this may impact that. And what this slide will show you is exactly that example, is if we do these things, or these things happen, how does that impact us going forward? And of course, a little history for those who haven't been with us. We did a standards and poor review. It was a formal, long process for general obligation bond sales. We sold temporary notes that will later turn into permanent financing for roads, big projects, things like that, capital improvements, right? So, when that happens, we have a policy, and these are one of the factors. They take a number of them. One major factor is, we have a policy set by this body that's been long-serving, that our fund balance, our cash on hand, that's the words I like, your savings account, just think of it that way, that the cash on hand is 15 to 18%, okay? That's a good, healthy budget that if something were to go wrong, you could deficit spend, and you have money to pay for things that you just didn't anticipate, which is fairly common, because when we're doing the budget about May, June, July, we're really heavy into that, we're not spending that money till the next year, literally, till January, like we're doing right now. And so it's hard to predict things like inflation, as we saw after COVID and things like that. And so, well, maybe our tax rate collection was lower than the previous year or the expectation. So, there's a lot of picture here, in the sense that I like to look at a couple of years' budget, and that's what you're gonna see here. We have the audited 2022 information. This has been audited by our CPA, and these are what I would say true-to-form numbers, and that will show you the first picture. The second picture is the unaudited 2023. You remember me saying, "I can't wait till December 29th," because that's when I can kind of get a clean slate, a better picture of how we performed, because for me, this was somewhat of an August 1st budget for me, right? Even though you heard me talk about it through the time, I just didn't have time to really delve in and say, "This is how we performed, this is what I expect," that sort of thing. So, you heard me maybe over-communicating, like, "Okay, this month, it looks bad." Or, "This month, it looks better," that sort of thing. But I wanted to keep you abreast of how we were tracking through the year, and I'm gonna confess right now, I put my foot down about the expenditures, and you'll see that as soon as I realized in August that, gosh, I don't see that we're performing as well as we should. I told the staff, "We have to slow down on spending where it's not necessary," though they will propose a budget, but they said, "All of this stuff is necessary, but couldn't we live without these things and make these things the priority? Let's figure out what those are." And they were very cooperative, and they said, "Okay, we can do that for the next five, four, five months." And so we did do that. So, with all of that narration, as you know, I'm the one who presented the 2024 numbers. I did work with the previous administration a little bit to transition that. I say this all the time, it's a trust-but-verify policy for me. I didn't necessarily do that. I trusted that the years of experience in the budget and the numbers were there, and you'll see as we track through, they're a little different than expected. And that's why we put a full stop on, and we're having this presentation, so we can have an informed discussion about exactly what it is that we may want to do and consider for the future, okay? And again, I think if we start this budget process, and this is my chair, I'd say, no matter what, folks, we need a two-year budget outlook. Three and four years doesn't work, because it's so variable in the assessed values and what we might be doing in those couple of years. So, you can get out three years of information, but it becomes worthless. It really just, you end up starting over. So, okay, so let's get started on the audit in 2022. And you've seen this material, hopefully you had a chance to look it over. It's just numbers until we have the narration, which is now. If you look on the left, you have the green box, okay? That is what staff presented in 2022 as somewhat estimated, but the very first number that you see, that fund balance, is an absolute. It was an audited number, and that was the cash on hand. That's your savings, right? And so then the next piece of it was the revenue estimate, 6.8, almost 6.9 million. And then we had an expenditure, which assumes a 2% overage, and that's $6.6 million. With a healthy $1.1-plus million cash on hand, projected year-end balance. That's solid, you like that number? I'm telling you right now, 1.1 and plus, you're in a pretty good position with that 15 to 18%. But if you drop all the way down to the bottom of the slide, it says non-compliant at 13.8, because what we have is the audited budgeted performance. I'm not talking a lot about revenue, because if there was a lot of revenue to talk about, we wouldn't have a non-compliance. So, if you look at the expenditures here in the 22 audited performance, all the red is over expenditures. All the red on the right, okay? That total amount is $567,000 in general fund money that was over the allotted budget. Okay, that's an audited number, okay? But you look at the very bottom number, where we only missed our mark by about $143,000. That's because we did have a pretty solid revenue production that particular year. We generated fines, fees, taxes, property taxes, we did okay. However, the real number here where this whole thing starts, it started in 2022, right? This is where this happens. We said we were gonna get 1.1 million healthy. We also said by the budget, it's gonna be about 10,000 less than we projected originally, about that 1.118 from the 1.1128. So, we end the number in an audited number of $975,000, which in both circumstances would be fairly solid, but it doesn't meet the fund balance criteria by policy, 15 to 18%. So, the cash we have on hand at the start of 2023 is at 975,000. You see that in bold. And what that means against our expenditures is that 13.8%. So, again, some of this is a little subjective, and it's not all guessing. But again, you can see where this is our starting point for '23, and '23 is our starting point for '24. Notice we missed our marks, okay? Moving on. Okay, I'm pushing the button. Okay? So, let's look at 2023 again. We won't have an audit for a couple of months, but it will be sooner than our previous audit, because I insisted on it. I want a clean slate, however we're moving forward, doesn't matter. What matters is that we have the cleanest numbers that we have, so we can make informed decisions as we move forward. So, if you look at what our budget was, we were gonna spend $7.4 million, almost 7.5, and we ended up only spending 7.2. And again, I'm not saying taking credit, that was out of scare. I was nervous, right? I said, "Hey, guys, we really have to..." You know, 7.4, that's a big budget, folks, that's pretty heavy spending. It was approved, again, I'm not trying to criticize anyone, but we budgeted revenue at 7.29, but we were gonna spend 7.4. So, the purpose is on taxation, generating revenue. We want to try to generate the amount of revenue that offsets our spending and have cash on hand. It's very simple, right? Those are the three components: expenditures, revenue, cash on hand, and you hope there's a surplus every time. Not only that, you don't only hope it, you set a policy that says, "We're gonna have 15 to 18% surplus, so we can be in a healthy position all the time," right? So, we can deficit spend if we need to, and those sorts of things. You notice that the cash on hand was $95,000 again. What we've done is, based on our expenditures that were held in check, were $28,000 in deficit spending. We spent into our cash for about that $28,000. I have a fairly high confidence, that's a pretty accurate number. What we can do is with revenue, it doesn't come in after the end of the year, that's applied to the previous year. So, if 2023, January 29th is the last business day, there's no more revenue we can account for, right? The expenditures, on the other hand, we have invoices from December that get mailed to us in January, hopefully not February, but we'll attribute those back, and that's not gonna be 1%. So, we think we're fairly close. These are, we use numbers that we took days and days and days to produce. We double, triple-checked them, that we're gonna give to our auditor. These are the same numbers we'll give the auditor. He'll come out with some of these, you know, formal reports, however, these are fairly close. But understand, our revenue was 90-some thousand less than we projected. So, where did we start? We started in a lesser cash position. We generated less revenue with an expectation that we were gonna spend $7.4 million, when we just spent barely over about 7.2, somewhere in there, right? And so, we're still at 946,000 cash, okay? And so, we're gonna talk about where we thought we would be, which is not this. We didn't expect this, this is a deficit compared. So, and again, our budgeted revenue was 7.29. Now, where this revenue comes from? If you think of today's money, right? Our, we, 1 mil is 100,000, just barely over $100,000. We assigned 30 mils, 30, to the general fund, and 10.41 to the debt service that we have, bonds, sewer all things, whatever we do. And so, that's how we generate and make the payments, right? So, if we at 100% collected all the money on property, after-earned taxes, your property taxes, that's $3 million, okay? But we're a long way from what we thought was gonna be 7.29. So, where does the next piece of it come from? Sales tax, county use, city use, sales and county. So, there's four categories of county, city taxes. That's about $2.2 million, all right? We're still a little ways away from, even if we collect 100% of our after-earned taxes, which we don't, it's 97. So, 97% of those, that $3 million is under that, it's 2.96, somewhere in there. So, right away, we're in this, a different position than the higher position that we thought we would be in, where then, we have all this cash, we generate this revenue, and we would be 15 or plus percentage compliance with our fund balance policy, right? Everybody follow me? Again, when we ended this year, cash on hand versus our expenses were once again, for the fifth time, were under 15%, but it's better than 12.6, it's not as good as 14, and it's certainly not as good as 15 to 18%. Okay? But we tried to really control this, because we need to be here for our credit rating. We're a AA minus, and we fell to an A stable because of these things: over expenditures and spending our cash into those percentages, not just a little bit, 13 to 12%, when you're getting in a consistent, the average, that means you're really dipping into your cash, and therefore, you're not as healthy as you say you should be by policy. There's a shall in there, and they weigh that fairly heavily. So, not to belabor that too much, what happens next? One begats the other, as you can see. That's why I like this, let's look at it a couple of years of budget before we make final decisions on one year, and then looking at another, and we can make a better, more informed decision, because you're going to remember, I hope.
Mark, I got a question for you.
Please.
We were, we were at AAA minus, correct?
AAA, AA minus.
Double A minus. That's what they, now we're dropped down to just A, like?
And I would say disclaimer-wise, they gave us a stable in the narrative, and that was being generous, because we do have stability. We're not poor. Don't let me communicate to you, this is just general fund. We have funds in other places, and we're solid and healthy. But number one, we have a policy that says, "We're gonna have a fund balance," which is general accounting, governmental accounting practice. It's good practice, 15 to 18%, that's solid. Now, are we a complete failure, because we're not meeting that? No, but they say, "Hey, wait a minute," right? What they're saying is, "You didn't meet your own policy, therefore, you know, we don't find that you're as healthy as you should be, and therefore, we're gonna lower your rating." Now, what that means to us, and I'm elaborating a little bit on your question, is, as you know, we got lucky with our temp notes under five, but if you take those temp notes, plus Phase II and 98 Street, Town Center Connector sidewalks, any of these other projects that we want to take on, and you're closing on 7.5 million, say, for example, at 5.5 interest, that's a big number compared to under five. And that's what happens when you go from a AA minus to an A. Your credit is gonna cost you more, because you have a worse credit line. Does that make sense? And therefore, we want to get to the 3.5 or lower, if you can, if that's even possible these days, but you want the best opportunity to get the lowest interest rate for those big dollars, right? Does 800,000 in cash on hand and 900,000 cash on hand mean something? It surely does, but it really means something to our credit line. Does that make sense? That's kind of what I'm trying to emphasize, is that. We have that policy for that specific reason. So, we dropped from a AA minus, which is, we were rare in Kansas. That was their narrative, and we went to an A stable. So, that's a double dip, double drop, okay? Okay? So, you see where we're at now? Overall, we dropped into our cash about 28,000. We didn't start in the position we thought we were. We certainly didn't spend as much money, but had we, oh my goodness, you know, that's even a rubber... Mark, did I, I'm sorry, Mr. Bishop, did I answer your question? Okay. Let me see if I can move this forward, because the next piece... Um, I hope no. Is that the very next slide, I hope?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Now, I just call your attention, I forgot about 2024, you know, I was stuck in 2023. That, to the right there, the very first should be a 1124 balance, because we moved the 23, the end of the year 23 balance, cash on hand to that upper right-hand. Now, you're looking at those numbers going, "Hmm," if you're paying attention, those aren't the right numbers. That's because, here's what has happened. We over-projected the revenue. We under-projected the expenditures, and the cash on hand, right? I just informed you of it, the last two years didn't perform as it should have, right? Even with some savings, we couldn't do much more, there just was not enough time. So, what we said in staff presentations, these are our numbers. 1.2 million in cash on hand, 7.6 million in additional revenue, revenues for this upcoming year, 2024. Again, I'll say 7.6, and 7.687 more in expenditures, which is deficit spend of 1.1, almost 1.2 million, which gets you your 15.5, something I was cheering, you know? August, I was like, "Oh, yeah, this is pretty good." Not to be too informal here, folks, but we're just talking common sense stuff. This is where we need to be, but two years now, we didn't get here, okay? So, really, I'm just drawing your attention back to the revenue of 7.2, when that left-hand side says, "We thought the revenue would even be 7.3," but the budgeted number was 7.29, right? There's a lot of numbers that goes into the state forms and what we presented, and outflows. So, some of these kind of changes, they go a little bit, plus or minus 1% is a terrible margin. But then the revenue, this got downplayed about August. I would say, going in from July to August, to that 7, just right over 7 million, which of course is about on track. So, if we held that line, we're above that, you know, 200,000 at 7.2, if we finish that. So, if you look at our revenue now, 7.2 is pretty close. Our expenses, 7243, with the ending cash, once again, it's just reference points. But this was the formulation, this is the calculation that you start from, May, you know? It's, so again, I questioned 7.6 in revenue, when I just told you that 1 mil is 100,000, and we only have 30 mils assigned to the general fund. I mean, you've gotta come up with a lot more money. And again, when we talk about economic development, when we talk about sales tax, not only just Edwardsville, but the county overall, because that's a positive feature for us, but that's about cash, and that you need other revenue streams, and that's one way you get that. But again, that's our performance, that looks pretty good. It's not real, it's not our reality. So, we'll move on, I hope. Okay, yes. Now, you should recognize at least my box effort. This is how I presented it as we went through, right past July and August, September. I thought I'd just break these down in boxes, and then we had a 3/4 mil decrease. And if you recall, I was using the calculator on my phone and scratching things down, and as I went back to the office and did it formally, this is about, based on trust-but-verify information that we had in August. And so, you see the assessed valuation, you see what a mil rate is, you see where we have assigned that. We have delinquent tax collection, about 59,000, that actually is about 39,000, so we're about 20,000 off right away in 2023. So, that's not quite where we need to be. But all the expected revenues were gonna be $7.6 million, okay? And I go back to, the reality is in that 7.2 to 7.4 is a good number. And so, that's, again, revenues are overestimated, and the start fund balance for 2024, that's 1.2 million. And if you look at where our expenses are, we end those with 7.6 million. And so, a total of 8.8 million, minus your expenses, you end up with 1.3, almost 1.2 million, and you're in a great cash position. That's, man, we wish, because that's 15.5, it's gonna pay for all this stuff. Raises, you know, our benefits, taxes, all the things that we do, plus these full-time people, as well as part-time positions. And I know that was a challenge for us to get there, and I publicly said it. That's one of the reasons we have such high expenses, is personnel runs about 84% of our entire budget. And I said, "Number one, protect the cash flow," right? When I started, that's the first thing we have to think of, how do we protect our cash flow? Here's one way we do it. When we buy police vehicles and vehicles, we lease those, because it's not 400,000 in one swipe, it's payments over a three-year period, which protects our cash and our general fund, right? And for that reason, 15 to 18%, that's why we do some of those things. Those are good business strategies to protect cash, okay? So, in the sense, you saw this, we ended cash on hand, almost 300,000 less than we thought we would. We rejected. And again, I just reiterated the revenue, the expenses that we think are gonna be well within 1% with cash on hand, about 900,000. are going to be well within one percent with cash on hand, about nine hundred forty-six thousand. So that, that is the presentation that you saw, these, these highlighted, uh, this box right in the middle. And we moved forward on making decisions, August, September, October, based on this information with, with the three-quarter mil decrease, because that's one of the goals. How do we offset paying all the things as well as taking off the burden of the taxpayers? How do we reduce that? And, and that was a strategy that we had, based on different numbers. So I'm not going to belabor that anymore unless you have questions. I've moved on. Uh, so A, B, and C. Okay, I'm just kind of just framing this up once again. If you look at A, this is a fund balance, unaudited cash. This is the number I'm using now. We use the unaudited cash of that nine hundred forty-six thousand. If you look to the right, again, change that twenty-three to twenty-four there on that fund balance. We'll start with that number, but we're leaving in the revenue projections, which is a mistake, but. We're leaving it in for demonstration purposes and we left the expenses in. Okay? So if you spend all your money that you said you were, if you collect at the rate you're going to collect that you said you were, and you have this cash, your position is eight hundred eighty-eight thousand cash on hand. That's eleven percent. That's not even twelve percent. We're not even pushing that. Okay? So let's go to B. Now, B is, I talked to you about property tax, out-of-labor taxes. I talked to you about sales tax, county use and what that generates. So we've got three million, a hundred percent, two point five, uh, two point two million. And then all of our other fee structure generates about that another two point two million on its high level. There are three things that really generate franchise fees, court payments, and, uh, gain, gaming revenue. Those are the three that equal about one point four million dollars. So we're short of that two point two. So all the other fees, if there's no other variation, has to, you know, reinforce that to get us to about that two point two million. So what, you got the five, you got the two point two, and you got another two point two. And that's how you get towards this seven point two to seven point four million, but it never takes you to seven point six. And how you do that is, out-of-labor taxes, you don't lower them, you raise them. And we don't want to do that, right? Then we have other streams to catch up to this cash. So what I did is I looked at the growth projections that we've used in the past on our, our just overall fee structures and things and how much revenue we generate. And there is about a two percent growth. So that's the factor I use. It's fairly conservative. And so I figured seven point four million, and that may be just slightly high, is the number we probably should use in, in the twenty twenty-four budget, not the seven point six. You see, that's the difference, okay? So when we come back to C, we're recalculating the entire twenty twenty-four budget, the expenditures, revenue, and the cash on hand. Oh, by the way, if, even if we have the cash, what we have, twenty twenty-three, if we have the revenue at seven point four instead of seven point six, and we spend seven point six plus, we have seven hundred twenty-one thousand dollars in the bank, that's under ten percent. It just gets worse. And what's holding true, you, you see the pattern? The pattern is the expenditures with no reinforcement for the general fund and its cash on hand. Okay, so that's, that's the ailment, if you will. That's what's played in this. So let's move on. Would you just push that, I have this thing. Okay, considerations, I'm not making any recommendations or whatever, but these are considerations. Increase revenue. Everybody refers to me as chief, but this is captain obvious, right? You know, increase revenue, yeah, that's, that's, that's a sensible thing, right? Uh, however, how do we do that? And it's not tax burden. Now, it could be in the sense of not a burden, but we have opportunities for sales tax. You generate more revenue through sales tax, cash registers in town, economic development, that sort of thing. Uh, hopefully the county overall performs better under county use tax, right? Those sorts of things, and we get that in the city use tax. And those things perform. Gaming revenue, if, if that goes through the roof, we get more money, right? That's how that works. Now, what about court? Well, that's a variable. There was a time it generated two hundred thousand. It generates over four hundred thousand. You know, there's a, that's a long, that's a, that's a pretty wide gap. So that's variable, right? It's, you may find people five hundred thousand, but what if they don't pay? Right? What if they do their time in jail? And guess what that is? It costs the city, right? So there's a variable. You can depend on them when they're accurate. But in the sense, that can't be an absolute stream until there's a real history of it being three, four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand on a consistent basis. And that's not consistent. So then you got your franchise fees. How do you, how do you add those? Well, uh, we talked about it. I think the mayor's, one of her priorities was, we have a pilot in lieu of a franchise fee. Don't we? And that pilot's a VPU. And any other utility that works, uh, is inside the city limits of Edwardsville pays a franchise fee. And that's about five hundred thousand dollars a year, somewhere in that range. But that would be in addition. That's one thing. We could have new cell phones or new something come in, you know, and energy or whatever they expand. So that may generate some more revenue, right? We remember when all of these gas companies combined and did some of these other businesses, we weren't sure how that was going to flow. It's starting to steady out now. So increased revenue, that's the obvious one, right? But it's not the easy one, right? So, uh, decrease citywide expenditures? That's absolutely something you can do. Remember, we pushed off a lot of things in structure for the twenty twenty-four budget, just for these opportunities. Cash flow, right? Say, hey, okay. We went all in, the kitchen seat was there, we voted on it. Things have changed, the economy changed, whatever happened. We have a different picture and now we have opportunities to make decisions that are in the best interest of everybody, right? So stringent management of the departmental spending. Uh, you'll notice in that twenty twenty-two, PD was one of them that overspent. Now, uh, I think there's been some consistence, some of the drivers there were, things were just more expensive suddenly. You know, we had four, four dollars and six cents a gallon of gas. But those are just some variables. It's also, it's the job of this position to say, we can't deficit spend five mils. We can't do that, right? We have to say, an over here and there is expected because it happens. Things, things happen. We have this big emergency and whatever might happen. The roof collapsed, or it was about to collapse, and we have to put some money in there, right? Those kinds of things. But this needs to be looked at under my watch so far. We meet every Tuesday and every Tuesday is a pleasant presentation. That's how we do it. And that, the reason is, if the, if the department heads are not apprised of their progress, then how can we fix things as we go and make adjustments? The second piece of that, and I appreciate your votes and support. We've, we have engaged the financial software change. It'll take twelve months. It'll be, we'll sit here in this meeting and hopefully have turned that on. It'll take that long of time, but everybody be trained. It'll be so much more interactive for the public as well as us. And we can push a button and know what we spent that day, that week, that month. And it'll be right there at our hands and that'll be a lot easier. Because I can tell you, not to digress too far, our current financial system is a total frustration. We ran numbers today, the same accounts, and the numbers were different every time. And so the confidence that I reported that to you is pretty low. I mean, I question all, all the time. It frustrates, I think, our staff. But that's what we're doing. Infuse existing cash from various funds into the general fund. We do this quite regularly with, for example, the sewer fund. We have people who are employed here, who are paid by the sewer fund. But we also have people who are, who, who do utility billing for the sewer, who we don't reimburse, they're all paid out of general fund. Well, this money, if there's surplus, we can help pay and reimburse ourselves from the sewer fund to the general fund to help pay for that, because that utility clerk is paid out of general. It's things like that that we can change around, okay? So there's, there is cash, there are lawful transfers that we showed you even on our budget amendment in December. And I needed, I needed almost one more meeting in December to make one more change, but it is what it is and we're just moving forward. Adjust the fund balance policy, financial policy, that's your fifteen to eighteen percent cash on hand. I'm just, it's a consideration. I had to write it up there. But you don't want to do that. That, it's not an accepted county practice, not that we're absolutely. But you see what happens if we start messing with these things, that our ratings will be scrutinized very tightly. And it, it does impact us. It impacts our citizens. If you're paying more for your money, they have to pay more so you can pay more for your money. And we don't want to do that, okay? So those are considerations, uh, that you can have in mind. And there's probably a hundred more that you have in your minds right now that we can do. And here, I, I'm giving you some proposed actions. These are not absolute. But it shows you two strategies that I think are effective. That number one, we do have cash in the place, places that we can move it and, and reinforce our general fund. And what we need to reinforce our general fund is two hundred thirty thousand at the minimum. That's, that's the threshold. We can only do that at that minimum threshold if we cut out about a hundred to a hundred eighty-five thousand out of the general fund. Okay? And so you see how that equates to even the expected revenue of seven point four plus million? That's going to be a creep up. That's going to be, we have to manage that. That, you know, some of that we don't have any control of. And so, but hopefully the collections are higher, that sort of thing. But you infuse that with an additional two hundred thirty thousand. You're at seven point six and then almost seven point seven. You got your cash on hand, eight point six million. And you remember our previous reference was eight point eight million, so we're still short of that. We lower that expenses to that seven point five. Once again, I pointed this out, but one point one million plus is what pushes our financial policy to compliance, fifteen to eighteen percent. That's where we do that. So the more money you infuse, and the more money you cut, the higher that percentage goes. As long as we do these other things, stringent management of the budget, no over expenditures, hopefully nothing emergent, that sort of thing. So that's one method you could do that. You could do nothing at all. That is absolutely the answer. You could do nothing at all. There's, there's no legal, and I'm doing that in a common sense term, but there's no legal ramifications. It's just, again, there was a mention in a formal audit of floor management, and that would be repeated if you, if you did nothing at all. I, I do recommend we make some of these changes. Uh, we can stagger. There's a lot of things we can do. We have, we have three full-time firefighter positions scheduled for July one. We have one PD guy scheduled all year as in budgeted, right? But there are three down, plus the, plus the, plus one. So what's going to happen there, it's going to take them nine, ten months to get two of those. There's already going to be somewhat of savings, just by what I, I call natural attrition. You know, I think Mark, you pointed out, Mr. Bishop, sorry. Uh, he pointed out that, you know, hey, why didn't the PD, you know? And I said, hey, it's because it just takes so darn long to get somebody on board that if you funded day one, it isn't going to be six or eight months that you actually spend the money. So, and then we have, uh, every bit of two or, and or three, uh, that will be vacant fairly soon. So if not already. So that, that's kind of what, what they're doing there. So you have some natural, uh, kind of savings, if you will. The fire department has opportunities to spend money out of the special sales tax. I heat, I don't like going to that well all the time. But this may be a time with, in some of their equipment, you could save half of what I projected up there for the fire department. Uh, more than half, forty-six thousand dollars, you could just shift that over to special sales tax, where they could buy their equipment there. Uh, they could, we could stagger, for example, those mid-year hires by about four weeks, each one of them. Four weeks, four weeks, four weeks. You add another twelve weeks in there. You finally get them all, but you're saving every time you don't pay them. And it's just not the payroll, it's the benefits, right? Another twenty-eight percent on top of payroll. So, uh, you could do that. The, the, the public works, uh, we, it's, it's going to be, something happened over here. I'm sorry. Sorry, guys. Uh, the, uh, the pu- the public works. We have one retirement coming up. We have people on M L A. Uh, you know, they, these kinds of things, they're always playing with the staff. So we, any reinforcement we can do there, that's fine. Uh, we've had that advertised for quite a while with no, uh, no interest whatsoever. We thought it might be a tough job, too high. Uh, so there may be some just natural attrition in there as well, in a sense. But there is some room there as well, I think, to go to the, uh, special sales tax. Uh, it's, it's, it's minimal amount of money, but anywhere from that about ten thousand, a little under ten thousand dollars we can save out of there. So every little penny counts. Parks and community center, community center is always a variable. You just don't know what the revenue is going to, but you don't know that when we rent it, they don't tear it up. Because no matter if we keep their five hundred dollar deposit, maybe it has done eight thousand dollars of damage, right? Plug the toilets, whatever it might be. They tore down the flagpole once. So this thing could cost us money more than it is renting it, right? So these things do happen. So that's, there's not much to play in there. The parks is about their personnel and some of the, just the events that we have to sponsor. And there's, there's some money in there that, uh, you know, soccer shirts and some of this other stuff that more than likely, uh, maybe kids don't get it if we don't pay for it, kind of thing. So there's not much money, there's not much room in that particular budget. But I'm just giving you this a fifty thousand foot view. We need to fuse, reinforce our general fund through some money, uh, and as, in addition to review expenditures to make this happen. Unless there's, now, what I can do is find more money that's out there, ARPA funds and that sort of thing. But ARPA funds, we've committed to software. We want to build some sidewalks. We want to do these other things that are tangible for the entire citizenry. And, and though we did a waiver which says we accept this money for revenue loss reimbursement, and we can use it any way we want. We don't want to do that. That's not something we want to do. And little by little, it's trickling down. It happens, you know, with the software, it was under two hundred thousand. Sidewalks, we have an earmark for that, right? And then any other little tangible things that we want to, we want to commit to, you know, and that sort of thing. So the, the ARPA, I think, is, as an aside, we'll just leave that alone. But there's a little more in maybe the sewer fund. The improvement fund I listed, it's not that, it's, it's literally called the community improvement fund. It's not a CID, you know, it's not that. It, this is an in-and-out fund that was created some years ago to capture about sixty-two thousand dollars that we didn't know where to put. It was from some project from years and years, and it's just been sitting there. And I think this is the perfect time to put it to good use so that we don't have to mess with and, and risk and sweat it out the entire twenty twenty-four. Uh, it's just one more, uh, piece of cash that we can put in there. Sewer fund can handle another fifty thousand. We've got to be careful there. Uh, there are some expenditures coming in. If you have a pipe break, no matter what, you don't have enough cash in there anyway with a big failure. You could have a bond in it. So the economic development, that's been held with cash for quite a long time. I know there are some things that we, uh, number one, every day, the city event was doing economic development, every day, right? And that's what we did, right? We were there to serve citizens and, and promote and have a website and do all these things. So that's, that's very, uh, uh, good use of, of that particular money. There's, there's no project out there that we're offsetting this and that. What we did with this in the past is we built Ninety-third Street. That was our, our portion of the payment. That, not my decision. That was done as a reimbursement resolution, that sort of thing. And Ninety-third paid about one hundred forty-eight thousand out of this particular fund. Uh, I would have put it somewhere else. I'm not sure why. Uh, there is a surplus of funds in the economic development. We pay economic, why not E D C out of this for our membership? That is in fifteen thousand dollars. So there's, there's still surplus money in that. So with that, I will stop talking and, and listen to questions, comments, or concerns. And get a drink.
Um, I have a question that, and it may not be particularly about this, but is that okay?
Yeah, just me.
And this may be legal as well. So when people rent the community center, is there security that is mandatory?
If, if they have alcohol. Yep, because that is like a park, if you think of it as a public space. And so therefore we have an ordinance which allows that if you have served alcohol there, right, you're going to have a wedding party, for example, and you have beers and stuff, so you're going to hop around, not per se. Uh, that you have to have security there. And if it's over a hundred and fifty people or whatever, you have to have two of them. You have to pay that in advance with your deposit.
And we provide it.
Yes. And what has happened in one recent case is they lied about it. And we don't take kindly to that, right? So they didn't have security there. They clearly had alcohol there. And therefore we won't let those folks, number one, give their deposit back, nor will we let them rent it again. And any associated party, when in their application, we won't let them. So it's because those things get out of hand and they tear stuff up.
Is there somehow something that could be written in that lease when they sign that if there's a, uh, something broke, something that they're responsible for it?
There, there is some language. Now, for example, they go in and they tear it up. It's a crime, you know, purposely kicking the toilet and breaking up stuff. Uh, you know, we had to investigate the flagpole. Somebody during the party, they went out and tipped over the dang flagpole, tore it off his face. So, you know, we had to investigate, well, it had to happen at the party, but there's three hundred people there, you know? So who is it? Who did it? Nobody confessed, right? It was pretty tough. But that's why we have insurance, for example. And then if, should we solve that crime, there would should hopefully some victim's compensation that's added to that, that sentence, we hope, that sort of thing. But the, the, the best we can do is they give us a deposit and we just keep the deposit, which sometimes doesn't equate that. We've had, we've had unintentional flooding there, the toilets backed up, that sort of thing. They had a sewer smell that for a long time. But they put, for example, you put balloons on this type of ceiling, right? They tear that down, it tears that, or they don't take the tape off, like they, they leave a mess and things like that. That's staff time. So it doesn't equate to, but they gave us a rental fee. By the time we pay the janitor, we get the staff to set it up, do some of these other things. It's just not a moneymaker, but, but it is a revenue source. Now, again, we have these other offsetting expenses.
You could also raise a deposit or acquire.
We reviewed that, we reviewed that last year as far as, um, and we have a resident fee and a non-resident fee, which. As far as, um, and we have a resident fee and a non-resident fee, which, then you have the residents that rent it for that. They find the ways.
One thing, we take on somewhat the risk that somebody does major damage and it costs us, say, 500 or 5,000 bucks, you know, to redo a bathroom or whatever. You know, if it's damaged, we have insurance, we have a deductible, and then we can pursue criminal charges because of the activity. Now, it's just wear and tear because you have 300 people in there every other Saturday. You know, that's something we have to take on, which is budgeted in that, to paint the walls, buff the floor, you know, fix the fridge, to do all these things, replace the chairs when they get broken. We had it kind of built in.
Right. I have one more question. It's kind of a general question. So the very first page on your presentation.
Ma'am?
Second page. Obviously, the first page was the, second page, it looks like, uh, the budget performance audited section, for all the budgeted items and the departments, and then the actual, and the last line in the big bold red, the differences. So does each department recognize and see what happened and can each department work on that? I mean, I know, that may, that may sound easy, but...
Yeah, and it should be easy. I'm hoping to get there next year with the new software, because that's a lot easier. Now, what, what I employed, because I was always frustrated from the other end of this, of not seeing this in real time. Not even, we, when you saw the budget performance every month, right, you get that, at every second meeting, we would, there would be a generated report for you to see. That's when the department head saw it. And so you'd look and go, okay, I'm good. But the next month, you, you gotta wait 30 more days to see how you did. And then in six months, finally, you've got some data to say how you're performing, that sort of thing. Uh, these are audited numbers, and as you know, the audited, the audit took place March, April, presented by June, somewhere in there, I'm kind of looking at 50,000, but. So we wouldn't know these true performances until we saw the audit. And that's why you saw the staff over here saying, why didn't we get an audit book? Because that's where we get these numbers from. And so, that's where I got, right out of the audit book, you know, right? That's where these numbers come from, they're audited numbers. And so, performance wise, it was a different approach. And so, it's hard to hold people accountable when they don't know their real numbers till six months later, you know, and then, oh, by the way, full stop or something, and they still have operational. But if you look at it every week, right, we have a report, that may not change 1% from one week to the next, but if we see a significant change, something that spikes, something that's out of line, right, something that beyond the bell curve, then we can go and address it and say, okay, why has this happened, right? Uh, not to throw the fire department under the bus, but it's, it's a good, if you look at, they spent 100 and some thousand dollars in overtime in the first four months. So that's a red flag. So when we're looking at that, what's, we gotta know what's happened. Well, there's a good explanation, is they had so many people gone, that everybody had to work overtime, right? They had to keep calling back and they, we need paramedics on the bus, and, you know, these things. So they had to do that. But I would say then, my approach would be then, very simple, could we cut back maybe somewhere else and then balance out the spending as we move forward? Where could we cut? Because once you're a hundred thousand dollars, and you had an $80,000 overtime budget, four months, right? You got a little while to go yet before you end the year. And if you continue that trend of spending that much, there's no way you can balance it. So, the answer to the question is, it's easy, but it wasn't. In the sense of, we didn't get them for 30 days, uh, we didn't see this data till I'm giving it to you now. You know, it's, it's, we had to have access to this book, and it's nobody's fault. It's just simply, those are the audited numbers that we didn't see till June 2023.
And I'm surprised about the parks and recs. 29th, what was that?
Don't be surprised. I mean, it's okay to be surprised. What's happening, you remember reimbursement resolutions? These things are, they baffle me in some ways. So we decided that we were gonna have trails and sidewalks, right? And then what we did was we passed a reimbursement resolution, saying that for professional services, survey, engineering, all these things, pre-construction, we're gonna spend the money today, and in two or three years, we're gonna pay ourselves back, parks and rec, because parks, trails, sidewalks, that sort of thing. They primarily took the brunt of that particular, uh, reimbursement resolution. And the next piece was, we did a, a park landscaping survey, if you will, like a design survey, for the roundabout, and I think the river front park. I don't quote me, I'm not, I didn't delve that far into it. But that was also a bill, and we were like, when we got the bill, what is this? We had to ask the company, what do you do and why are you doing this? And we found out that's what it was. Well, that had to be charged somewhere, parks and rec, you know, because that's gonna be a landscaping, it's a park, green space. We just didn't know where else to put it.
The roundabout?
Yeah, the roundabout, and then the river.
I didn't realize that. Right. No, I know riverfront, I didn't realize that.
So we did the design, you noticed there's no plants there and such, you know.
Oh, I'm on the parks, I'm on the parks and recs. I know.
Do you recall how much that was, the roundabout?
A few thousand. That, that particular one was a, let me say, I don't know without it directly in front of me, but I'll research that.
That makes sense.
It wasn't substantial, but it was enough that they didn't have budgets. So when you have unfunded liabilities, and you plug them into the budget, you suddenly have overspent that budget or whatever that funded liability, if you spent 100% of the rest.
It was one, because that never came to council level, so I.
It was that Simtech, or whatever the company's name.
Sandtech.
Yes, that did the riverfront park. They were also commissioned to do a study of the green space at the roundabout.
Right.
Okay? So those are the kind of things that plagued that budget. It wasn't personnel overspent, or, you know, something crazy. It was, in a simple, it's some of those things, reimbursement resolutions, 40,000 a year, or whatever it was, uh, for some of these kinds of things that were unfunded liabilities, that we won't see back until we close on some bonds in the future to pay ourselves back.
Right. Now, that makes sense. Thank you.
Town Center Connector, and that roundabout stuff, and the riverfront park, those are the three I can think of.
Well, I think we'll have to make some adjustments. Um, I think it's good information for the council to have and kind of dig through, and, um, see if we can email you questions and get some more information as we are thinking it over.
Sorry that it was so lengthy, but it's important that we talk about it. We're gonna have to make some decisions. I'll need some direction at some point there, and just let me know. I mean, we have some time. I mean, this is the budget, you make the adjustments now. Uh, we, and again, cash flow was preserved, as we're not hiring until mid-year of those major expenses. So we have time to make some adjustments. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you need something printed still?
Do we wanna switch four and five? Would that be helpful?
Oh, we sure could. It's really up to you.
That'd be great. I just sent it, thank you.
You just sent it to me?
I just sent it.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
Okay, so we're just gonna swap those for our agenda. Um, item number five, we'll consider a motion to recess into executive session pursuant to K S A 754319B1, to discuss matters of non-also personals related to the position of city manager in the slow B governing body with our city attorney. Um, I would say 15 minutes.
Make a motion to recess for 15 minutes. In accordance to number five, consider motion pursuant to K S A 75 dash 4319B1. Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Shriver, and a second by Councilman Adcox, returning at 7:16. Will the clerk please call?
I'm sorry, returning at what time?
I'm trying to do the math on this. Oh, that's not quite enough.
7:10.
7:10, that'll work.
Malat?
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Adcox.
Yes.
Bullen.
Yes.
Bishop.
Yes.
This conference will now be recorded.
Make a motion to return to regular session?
Second. We have a motion from Councilman Adcox, and a second from Councilman, I'm sorry, Shriver, second from Councilman Adcox. Will the clerk please call? Malat?
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Adcox, yeah. Bullen?
Yes.
Bishop?
Make a motion to go to recess for 10 more minutes?
Yes.
15 more minutes?
7:11 now.
We'll come back at 8:15. Oh, no, 7:15.
Yes, I know, 7:15. I didn't talk.
I'm sorry, did I say that? I hate that clock.
So it's 7:11 now.
If that helps. So we'll be back in 15 minutes. 7:25. Yes. Is there a second?
Second. We have a motion from Councilman Shriver, and a second from Councilman Adcox. Will the clerk please call? Malat?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Adcox, yeah. Bullen?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
This conference will now be recorded.
Make a motion to return to regular session?
Second. We have a motion to return from Councilman Shriver, and a second from Councilman Adcox. Will the clerk please call? Malat?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Adcox?
Yes.
Bullen?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Moving on to item number four now, because we flipped them from earlier, to consider motion to recess, recess into executive session pursuant to K S A 754319B2, for consultation with the city attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship regarding potential litigation. Um, how much time do you think for that one? Do you think 10 minutes would?
10 minutes. To include, um, city manager, Ethan, and myself.
Yes. And then return at 7:36. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to recess an executive session for 10 minutes?
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Shriver, and a second from Councilman Adcox. Will the clerk please call? Malat?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Adcox?
Yes.
Bullen?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
This conference will now be recorded.
We have a motion. We have a motion to return to regular session by Councilman Shriver, and a second by Councilman Adcox. Will the clerk please call? Malat?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Adcox?
Yes.
Bullen?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Moving on to item six, the city manager report.
We talked about the hazardous waste usage from Edwardsville citizens. I received that letter from the administrator's office, and I forwarded that on to you some, some weeks ago. The follow-up to that is that there's about 70 between the dumpster days and hazardous waste, and the yard waste, uh, maybe a couple in the dumpster days. So they broke that down for me, but it, it's about 70 people. You know, there's no proposal as to, uh, what to do about that. Essentially, what they wanna do is, Edwardsville residents do not pay for the dumpster day, the K C K, the hazardous waste, or the yard waste. That's essentially what it comes down to. They did a full study, which you will receive on Friday. I have the four or five slide presentation that they received from Burden McDonald on that study. What they're asking is that we have some re-numeration. We haven't come to any kind of proposal whatsoever, uh, and that sort of thing. But it is on the, kind of the plate of discussion. Uh, that, that's really the one ticket item to follow up with. Uh, solid waste on the Edwardsville side, uh, we have, we have deficit spending $59,000. There was no money in that particular account. And as you know, during the budget amendment, we transferred 60,000. We received, uh, revenue from payments and things like that. It's kind of sporadic. We should end up with, with about 80, $84,000 in that account, which is, which is good, uh, because that, that covers about three or four months of payments, if we receive no more revenue. But we are, uh, on, on that note, as you, as we heard from, uh, previous council, uh, you know, collections, shutting off trash service and that sort of thing. We bill out a lot. The city pays for the service, so our money pays for it. And then, we get a collection rate of 68 percent. It's just terrible. And so, we're trying a lot better. Uh, you know, one of my early correspondence to you folks was about, you know, what deficit we work, you know, and that sort of thing. We've tried to recover. Offset, we have, using the offset, we use the lien program. So taxes are due now, and so we're seeing some collections related to them being on the tax rolls. So those, we are doing our part, being proactive in collections. We're doing a lot more to include, we're gonna have a form of policy about handling these collections, which is in research stage now. And essentially, 30 days, if you don't pay, you, it's, you're delinquent, and it's a charge due to the city by ordinance. But we bill every other month. And so, somebody could make that up on the next billing, so we're giving them two full cycles. So you're talking nearly six months. If they don't pay it by then, it's absolute delinquent, so we really know it's delinquent. So that's the policy that we're gonna implement, is after that, then we'll go after, uh, you know, the tenant and/or the owner of the property, and we can stop service. So it's been effective other places. When your trash doesn't get picked up, you tend to call the city, oh, and find out why. And then we can say, hey, you owe the 140 bucks, or whatever it is, make it up, you know, that's it. We have some that are three and four thousand bucks, because it's been five, six years and they haven't paid it off. So those are the kind of things that we have to fix. So we're doing that, we're working on that. That's my report, and I'll keep you short.
Thank you. Moving on to council comments. Start with Councilman Shriver.
Oh. Happy New Year, everybody. I, first of all, would like to congratulate Councilmember Camilla, Councilmember Michael, and Councilmember Garrett. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Um, it's a privilege to serve this city. I, um, I know Councilmember Malat, what term is this for you?
I'll extract. It's been a good 25 years with a little sabbatical in the middle.
Thank you for those years.
Started in 1993 or so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. It's an honor.
Right. I, um, just wanted to congratulate you three, um, on behalf of myself and Councilmember Bishop. It is a, it's a privilege to sit up here. Um, it's a lot of hard work, it's a lot of hard decisions. But our job up here is made a little bit easier, I guess, for lack of better wording, due to the department heads and every worker here at City Hall, from Public Works, the Fire Department, Police Department, Parks and Rec, and the administration in this building. And thank you all. I'm looking at you, Chantel. And thank you for leadership, and all the department heads. Hopefully, you'll pass this on to them.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. And to our attorney. Thank you so much. And all of those that come to our city council meetings. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Adcox?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Councilman Mullin?
Nothing.
Councilman Bishop?
Um, nothing.
And Councilman Malat?
I could probably echo what Margaret said. It is, can be a thankless job, but, uh, my heart is in it. Sometimes I come across kind of brass, or crass, or old mannish, but I've been here a long, long time, and I really appreciate being able to serve my community. I was born here. I have never left, except when I went to college. So it's an honor and a privilege to serve Edwardsville. Welcome, the new member, Michael. And I have to discuss with you to see if you're related to the Mullins in bond, or I am. Rick Mullin, and Rick and all of them. So we're acquainted through baseball, and, you know, kids growing up together and all of that. So, um, it's like, you know, I'm reiterating, it's a privilege to work here. We do have excellent city staff. I just appreciate the heck out of Willem and Goodall, and all the employees and everything. And with the report that we just got, I think that this council can probably come to conclusions on fixing the issues that are in front of us. It might not always look pretty up here, between the six of us that are sitting up here. It might not always look pretty, but usually conclusions come out of it that are for the better part of Edwardsville. Debate is good. It's good to argue and fight once in a while, as long as you can come together for the common good. You know, sometimes I feel like I'm the advocate that tries to get to fighting more. But I think it also makes people start thinking a little bit more about the decisions that they're making that are for the benefit of the entire community. So with that, Happy New Year, and I'm honored to be able to serve another four years.
All right. Um, I need a couple notes, so I wouldn't forget anything. I lost mine. Curtis, uh, Mobile Pantry is coming up. The deadline for registration is Wednesday, and the event is this Saturday. And so, we'll be bundled up tight and, uh, and serve in the community. But if, if we know anyone in need, and especially in Edwardsville, but in the nearby community, please encourage them to sign up to get groceries. Um, I wanted to thank our staff. It's been a little while since we've been here, but the, um, staff from the entire city, really, the Fire Department, City Hall, Police Department, Parks, um, put on a Christmas breakfast for the seniors at the high-rise. And, um, they even reached out to me and said, thank you so much. That... out to me and said, thank you so much. That went, uh, it just means a lot to them, to have visitors and to have food. I know Chief Willem put a lot of thought into that and serving them food on a week where meals and wheels, uh, were only able to come once that entire weekend. So that, um, set them up a little bit better for the holidays, and they really appreciated that. Um, on that note, thank you, everybody, and have a great New Year.